Four o'clock and I'd like to call this Bay County Board of Commissioners' major order. Roll call, please.
Crager.
Yes.
Begit.
Here.
Cooney.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
Ryder.
Here.
Glutz.
Here.
Durantchik.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Pledge of allegiance.
Lord God, our heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon again asking that you oblige the session of the county commission. Lord, grant to us this day that by your holy inspiration we may think things that are right and by your merciful guiding accomplish them. Be with this board this day and guide them so that decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. In your holy name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes five fourteen, five twenty-one, and five twenty-eight, and six four. What's your pleasure?
Motion to adjourn.
We have motion support. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say aye. Motion carried. At this time, we have, is a time for citizen input. Any citizen wishing to address? Come right upstairs, state your name, and possibly a purpose of why you're here.
Yeah, greetings. My name is Paul Travis. I live at seven oh three South Arbor here in Bay City. And I'd like to address the commission and Executive Barsha regarding my application to the library board. I appreciate your consideration for that. I just give you a little bit of background of myself. I graduated from West Catholic Central here in Bay City and went on to get a degree in teaching at Western Michigan University and then got a master's degree in curriculum instruction and administration from Michigan State. I had several jobs while I was going to college and some of them inspired me to continuing to go to college as working at the Gray Iron and Nodler Foundries and was in the yard crew at the Kern Waddock Plant and also I worked for Bay City DPW throwing trash. I taught middle school when I first started my career in Marlette, a small town in the middle of thumb, and I coached boys and girls basketball and I directed plays there. I came to Bay City to teach in eighty-six and I went on for twenty-four years here in the Bay City schools, teaching elementary primarily. And then I was appointed principal and I was at several schools as principal and also part of my responsibilities for several years included overseeing our elementary library staff. I am married to Luanne for over thirty-eight years. She's a school psychologist and special ed administrator, retired from Bay-Aranac and Saginaw Intermediate. I have children, two children, Dr. Matt Travis, the director of orchestral and choral music at the Midland Center for the Arts. And I can't tell you how exciting it is to have him back here because he's been gone for many years and that job opened up and he decided to come back to our area, which to me says a lot about his desire to commit to the Great Lakes Bay area. And he chose to live in Bay City, which is kind of fascinating. And then I have a daughter Katie who's also professional in the world of music. Some of you may have heard of her. She played the female lead in Phantom of the Opera and did seven hundred shows in fifty-six cities, which had her parents traveling all over the country, which was a fun thing. Thankfully, we were both retired during that time. We have had, both my wife and I grew up on the west side and went to Sage Library on a regular basis. About this time, as an eight or nine-year-old, I can't believe we rode our bikes all over in those days. I don't think you let your kids do what we did, but I rode my bike regularly from around the Saint Mary's neighborhood over to Sage Library during summer reading program, which of course has continued on to this day. We also, and when our children became of age, we started taking them to the library. We live on the riverfront on the west side, so Sage was our natural library to go to. And while we took out many books, I must say, we took out in those days music tapes, which probably wouldn't happen anymore with the CD world, but I always think about how much that added to their stimulation of their music, which they were oriented to very early in life. As a teacher, I got many book collections from the library when I planned various units and they were so accommodating. Elizabeth was the key person, if those of you know Elizabeth, she was a legend in children's literature in this community. And I also was involved in supporting various millage efforts and sometimes wrote to the Bay City Times in that long-gone era of People's Forum. And I just have always felt so committed to the importance of libraries as an educator and as a parent. And just lastly, I didn't realize one use that I never thought I would need, but it's coincidentally, when I was composing a letter that I sent to all of you as a cover for my application, because I went to type, and I should qualify, I'm a pathetic typer, I can do pretty fairly good, but if I want something fast, my wife is so accommodating. So she was about to type it and we found out that our printer and our computer were not lining up together. So, and I wanted to get this in, so where did we go? To Word Library, to the computers there in that beautiful computer room. And I'm thinking, how appropriate is this? I'm writing this letter to apply for this position in Word Library's computer room. So with that, I'll finish my comments, but I appreciate the time to share my thoughts with you and thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Rich Moskell. I live at fifty-two fifteen Prairie Creek Court in Monitor Township. I have a situation, I'd like to have a handout. May I do that, please?
Yes.
This is a copy of a regulation that is in the general code, the municipal code of Bay City, or Bay County. And as I say, I have a neighbor who plays incessantly, stereo. I mean, I'm saying incessantly, I mean until ten o'clock at night. You can't be at home with your windows open, you can't be outdoors. Several neighbors have talked about it, complained about it. I'm the one that's here. I'll just read this briefly if I may. "Using, operating, or permitting or replaying the use of or operator any radio receiving kit, musical instrument, phonograph, or any other machine or device for the producing or reproducing of sound in such manner as to disturb the peace and quiet, comfort of the neighborhood inhabitants at any time with louder value, volume that is necessary for the convenient hearing of a person or persons who are in the room, vehicle, or chamber should be such machine devices operated and who are voluntary listeners there too." Then it goes on with some other detail, and it's almost like a conflicting regulation because then it goes on to say, "The operation of any such set, phonograph, machine, or device between the hours of ten and seven in such a manner as to plainly audible at the distance of fifty feet from the building structure or vehicle in which it is located shall be prima facie evidence of the violation of the section." So in one place it says, "At any time," it can't be done. And then it goes on to contradict itself. So I guess my question is, what part of this is real? What is the regulation? I mean, I don't expect you to answer that right now.
Do you have the name, your name and address on this form that commissioners have?
No, sir.
Okay. If you could get a copy of that so that I can furnish that to administration and then we will check into it, both the legal and with the Sheriff's Department, just to, then we will get back to you, we'll weigh in on it.
Sure, I can do that.
Commissioner Cooney.
Have you been to Monitor Township yet, sir?
No, their meeting is on the twenty-fourth of June.
Because I think they probably might, Township might supersede this or...
But this isn't, all the Townships are in the county. I don't understand how the Township would supersede the county.
Sir, but you have to understand that in nineteen seventy-nine, we just looked up the legal aspects for another instance, but county cannot be involved with ordinances that are set in Townships or cities. So if they have an ordinance, then their ordinance actually supersedes our ordinance, or if there is an ordinance, but that's something we need to check.
So what meaning does this have? I mean, I would just like to understand.
I have no idea. You just brought it to us today and I haven't even looked at it, so. Commissioner? Commissioner Begit.
I stopped at Monitor Township on the way over and they do not have an ordinance on this. This is the county ordinance from seventy-nine or eighty-four or whatever.
Okay, so they don't have a Township?
They don't have a Township.
Okay, alright.
And I did talk to them about it and...
Maybe they need one.
Amber?
This is something that the board has discussed before. We are in the process of, and it's taking some time because we need to determine exactly what the parameters are going to be. We are in the process of revamping our noise ordinance for a number of reasons. Number one, court cases have determined that decibel levels such as contained within our ordinance are generally unenforceable because we do not have the equipment in order to measure those levels. And in addition, our county noise ordinance only legally applies to county-owned properties. There is an attorney general opinion from, I believe, when Jennifer Granholm was an attorney general. This is a very old ordinance which had not been reviewed for a period of time. It's one of the ones that are in the queue to try and update, but unfortunately, from a legal perspective, the only noise that the county proper can regulate is noise on county property. And that is due to the fact that if any other municipality doesn't back aside that they want to pass a noise ordinance, ours is ineffective. We can't control, excuse me, what the residents of those self-contained Townships or villages do. Excuse me.
Have I said her lots?
So Amber, what you're saying is that this gentleman could go to Township and ask the kind of noise ordinance that they will enforce?
That would be the most effective route to address the issue.
I have a question. When you say it's only enforceable on county property, does that mean like this building?
Yes.
Anyplace else?
Any property that's owned by the county proper, so the golf course, the county building...
I didn't open this earlier.
The fairgrounds, Pinconning Park, those properties that are, the civic arena, those properties that are owned by the county itself.
Go ahead, get it to whoever she got there.
Okay, well, it is what it is, huh?
Mr. Barsha?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, very sympathetic to what you're going through when you have a situation like this with a neighbor. Back when I was in the state senate, we had a gentleman out on M-13 and, I don't know if you've ever rode, Ben McGrove, who used to get really riled up when one of the motorcycle businesses out on M-13 would have what they call a poker run. It would be like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty. Harley gave us, and I was revving, you know, I mean motorcycles revving, their engines and they have that certain battle system in the motor, so very loud. I went out and I sat with him on a few Saturdays and got state police out there. They said they don't have the equipment to measure the decibels and it's very difficult to win a case in court, so we couldn't get the prosecutor. I wasn't with the county then, but it was very sympathetic to what I was going through. It was right on the corner and it was just endless, you know. He'd be out there shaking his fists and, you know. Unfortunately, they would go on and it was fine until I came back.
That's it, they come and go. And I understand weddings and graduation parties and all the rest of it, but this is a daily occurrence. And it's very disturbing. I mean, I have a right to quiet enjoyment of my property, but I don't have it.
Yeah, I, have you...
This is today's concert.
Alright, sir, we got your message, loud and clear.
I'm sorry.
We got your message.
Okay.
And we have your information.
Yep.
Corporation counsel, we're gonna look into our ordinance, maybe it needs to be upgraded or whatever, alright? And you left, you have his name and phone number.
I do.
Okay, contact information.
And maybe I'll communicate also with your Monitor Township officials too.
I would appreciate it. I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Megan Klein and I live at four zero one Rakoma Beach Road, and I wanted to take just a couple of minutes today to share with you about my passion for libraries and my desire to serve on our library board. I'm a relative newcomer to Bay County, lived here for about six years now, and I have absolutely fallen in love with what this community has to offer. I'm seeking this appointment to the library board as a way to give back to and support our amazing community. Despite what you all may have heard about the death of print books and the lack of interest in libraries, you may be interested to know that there are more public libraries in the United States than there are Starbucks or McDonald's. So now more than ever, they are a vital American institution in my opinion. In a time where finding truth can be so difficult, libraries are important defenders in the fight against misinformation. Our local library serves as a hub of information. It exists to provide equal access to information and enrichment to everyone in our community, regardless of age, income, education, or social status. According to the American Library Association, seventy-three percent of public libraries assist their patrons with job applications and interviewing skills, and forty-eight percent provide access and assistance to entrepreneurs looking to open new businesses. In helping individual community members succeed financially, libraries help entire communities thrive. I grew up the daughter of a librarian, so I'm sure you can all imagine I spent quite a bit of time in a library as a child. This allowed me to see firsthand the many benefits that public libraries offer to their community and to their patrons. Libraries are not just a place to borrow books or movies. Libraries help educate, they give safety information, health information, they promote financial responsibility, culture, and knowledge. I feel that my experiences and my unique set of abilities would complement those of the existing board members very well. As a mother of three children ages fourteen, ten, and four, I have my hands full, I understand the changing needs of children and young adults, and I can give a unique perspective on how to serve this portion of our community. And as a businesswoman, I can lend my ability to thoroughly plan projects both from a financial perspective and management perspective, as well as goal-setting and working with budgets. I feel that these qualities make me an excellent candidate to serve on our library board. I also have a strong commitment to customer experience that started back when I opened my first business at the age of twelve, selling scrap kindling from my dad's woodworking business. I continued to develop my aptitude for service while waiting tables at the Bavarian Inn in Frankenmuth while I went through high school and college. And my aim every day is to create experiences that go beyond expectations. And I believe this philosophy applies to both business and community organizations alike, and it would be my pleasure to serve on the library board. And I want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizen input? If not, we're gonna move into petition communications, presentation, recognition, resolution. Madam, would you please read it?
Resolution two thousand and nineteen one one four by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, there are many individuals in Bay County deserving of recognition for their contributions to Bay County, and one of those worthy individuals is Joseph H. Schultz, Sr., affectionately known as Bud since his early youth. And whereas, as the first child in his family to go to college securing a degree in pharmacy, Joseph Schultz, Sr., and his beloved late wife of sixty-six years, Mildred, opened Schultz Pharmacy, a business that prospered and selflessly served the Pinconning community for fifty years, providing customers with service whenever called upon, day or night, week, day or weekend, to include delivery of medications at no charge when necessary. And whereas, among his many and varied accomplishments, Joseph Schultz, Sr., assisted in administering the polio vaccine to all Pinconning area residents in the nineteen sixties. And whereas, while the owner of Schultz Pharmacy, Joseph H. Schultz, Sr., also owned the Wharf Marina for twenty years. And whereas, Joseph Schultz, Sr., has dedicated his life to serving the Pinconning area in many ways, including assisting in forming the first troop of Boy Scouts in Pinconning, serving as scout master, coaching Little League, a Lions Club member, a Chamber member, member of the Saint Michael's Building Committee, the Pinconning Bicentennial Committee, and even teaching chemistry at Saint Michael's High School. Whereas, in addition to the various organizations and committee he served on, Joseph Schultz, Sr., was involved in very important events and projects in the Pinconning community to include laboriously working with dedicated friends to develop Pinconning Park, aiding in the realization of a lookout tower at Pinconning Park, and chairing the Pinconning Ice Carnival, a popular community event held on the ice off the shore of what is now Pinconning Park. Joseph H. Schultz, Sr., is the Pinconning Park historian for grade school kids sponsored by the Rotary Club of Pinconning in Standish. And whereas, Joseph H. Schultz, Sr., and his wife Mildred, along with Bernard and Millie Myers, were instrumental in getting city water installed and running to people that live east of the railroad track, a major accomplishment since prior to nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four, everyone east of the tracks had to daily haul water for drinking, cooking, laundry, and bathing. And whereas, Joseph H. Schultz, Sr., who will be the age of ninety-five on October twenty-seventh, is known as a giver to family, friends, and community, and his lifetime of contributions must be acknowledged. Therefore, resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive recognize Joseph H. Schultz, Sr., for his lifelong dedication and commitment to giving back and faithfully serving this community. While it takes a village, it also takes a visionary and leader, and Joseph H. Schultz, Sr., has fulfilled that role admirably. Signed, Michael Durantchik, Chair and the Bay County Board of Commissioners.
I would like entertain a motion to adopt a resolution two thousand and nineteen dash one one four. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Bud, come on down.
Can I add just one thing?
Yes.
He was also a World War II veteran, serving in the Naval Air Corps.
(applause)
I like to say, when I hear it, it's been very good.
He thought he was going here for a service award for his grandson. We actually tricked him. He didn't know.
Congrats, we're all honored.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, come on right over here. There we go. How about some of the members of the family, sons, daughter, married, come on, get up here. Okay, just face that way. There you go.
I thought I was, but the kid went out and seen it.
See, yeah, this is Joe Schultz, Jr., so we had to make sure we had a distinction here. Alright, everybody. Now, as a little addition, we are going to dedicate the tower. At the park. This came out of my, I did this, this is my humble woodshop adventure into carving a sign for the first time, so it turned out pretty good. Hold on, we're not done yet. Dan, park ranger, you have a little presentation for Bud, too.
I would like you to accept this and as becoming honorary park ranger of Bay County Pinconning Park.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
He'll be down here every day trying to tell everybody how to do things. Yeah, he'll be lunch.
Instead of the aisle, we've got to clean up the east end.
There you go. So here's the sign, Dan, and screws are on the side there and we'll find a spot accordingly. Thank you, Bud. Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Dawn, for coming.
That's a big plan, seven or eight kids. Those are the Durantchiks, I think, were tied for seven or eight kids. Okay, next on the agenda, Bay County Historical Society, recognition of a hundredth anniversary, sponsored by Commissioner Tom Ryder. Would you please read that, ma'am?
Resolution two thousand and nineteen one one five by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, the Bay County Historical Society, a nonprofit organization that manages the Historical Museum of Bay County and cares for the Tremlee Center House located in Veterans Memorial Park, is celebrating its one hundredth anniversary. And whereas, the roots of the Bay County Historical Society began over a hundred and thirty-five years ago, when a group of citizens created the Bay County Pioneer Society with the purpose of preserving the history of Bay County. And whereas, while lasting less than two decades, this pioneering group comprised of some of Bay County's most prominent citizens paved the way for the current society which dates back to nineteen nineteen. Whereas, the Bay County Historical Society was formed with the intent of promoting the study, collection, and preservation of Bay County's story. And whereas, rising from humble beginnings and continuing to reach for the highest level of standards, the Bay County Historical Society continues its commitment to preserving Bay County's history. Whereas, the Bay County Historical Society and the Historical Museum of Bay County are housed within the former National Guard Armory. Whereas, this building constructed in nineteen ten has been named the home of the society since nineteen eighty-eight, and prior locations including the halls of Central High School, second floor of the Bay County building, and the Dible Home at Center Avenue and Northampton Street. Whereas, it is fitting and appropriate that the hard work and commitment of the Bay County Historical Society Board of Directors and the... of the Bay County Historical Society Board of Directors and the staff through the decades be acknowledged. Therefore be a result that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive, along with the citizens of Bay County, celebrate the one hundredth anniversary of the Bay County Historical Society. And be a further resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive applaud the efforts and dedication of the Bay County Historical Society Board of Directors and their staff, past, present, and to the preservation of Bay County's past, present, and future, and know that these efforts will continue to provide future generations with a look into the rich history of Bay County. Signed, Michael Durancheck Chair and Board.
Commissioner Ryder, would you entertain, take care of the motion, please?
Ask for the resolution to be adopted.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion is carried. Would you like to come down and present?
Mike, on behalf of our commissioners and Executive Barsha, we want to thank you for, and your Board of Directors, staff, and the past Board of Directors and staff, for all your work here in Bay County, telling the story of Bay County. For those of you that haven't visited the museum, I would encourage you to do so. It really tells the story of Bay County and how we got to where we are today, so thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you so much. And just so you all know that the museum is expanding. We're working on a new library, research library, so we're working on that, as well as we're working on bringing the Firehouse Museum to downtown Bay City as well. So we're working on a lot of different things right now. So thank you so much for this, and I'm not ninety-seven, so I can get out without a walker. Sure, the life of the museum is open at ten o'clock, so five o'clock Monday through Friday, and twelve o'clock to four o'clock on Saturdays. Thank you again so much.
Our third presentation today is June fifteenth is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash one one six. Beth, would you like to give us a little synopsis of what this is all about?
Thank you, thank you. We all know elder abuse is defined as intentional actions that cause harm or create serious risk or harm to vulnerable adults. Bay County Department on Aging, all of our clients, we take very special care of watching for any elder abuse that may happen. It's growing predominantly. Unfortunately, a lot of it is family-related, and a lot of our clients will not turn in children or their kids or their grandkids or aunts, uncles, that kind of thing. So this is very near and dear to our heart. I brought with me Jessica Duval, who is our elder abuse case manager, and we watch for this daily with all of our clients, whether they're at our sites or they are at our home-delivered meals, homemaking, or personal care.
All right, if you'd like to step right over here, come on down to both of yous and I'll... This is the resolution. All right, and just so everyone knows, the Department of Aging has, you can't say the word anymore, it's the Olympic Games at four o'clock awards, so commissioners, if you can make it, four o'clock Friday. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep. We have motion to support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Item B, City of Bay City Application for Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate Beyond Concourse LLC. Motion to receive would be in order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried. Request for appointment to Bay County Library Board. Motion to receive applications, please. We have motion to support to receive the applications. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Sergeant in arms. Yes.
Start a roll call with Commissioner Ryder today.
Paul Pratt.
Lutz.
Megan Klein.
Krieger.
Megan Klein.
Bigay.
Paul Travis.
Coonan.
Paul Travis.
Eric.
Paul Travis.
Durancheck.
Megan Klein.
Klein three, Trams four.
Thank you both for the applications and all that. I'll take, make, yes.
Happy to say, Mr. Chairman, we had two great candidates.
Fantastic.
And, you know, the Library Board is a board that we will eventually get another election in this time. Your abilities are very, very impressive, and Mr. Travis is as well. Unfortunately, we can only put one out, but if, in the future, I think your service would be very rewarding to become the Library Board.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the vote of Mr. Travis for the Library Vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Congratulations, Mr. Travis. Reports and resolutions of committees, Ways and Means. Commissioner Herrick, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring before you Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one seventeen, donation for the one hundredth club of Bay County. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one eighteen, memorandum of understanding with the Pew Charitable Trust, Michigan Joint Task Force on Jail and Pre-Chile Incarceration. I move this resolution.
We have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one nineteen, soil erosion sedimentation control permit. I move this resolution.
Motion to support. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty, fire express for parking lot lease agreement. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-one, Simco contract for Civic Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support. We have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-two, Interstate Hockey League Contract. I move this resolution.
Motion, excuse me, we have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-three, Haas Incorporated Contract Agreement. I move this resolution.
We have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-four, purchase of commercial mower for Center Ridge Arms. I move this resolution.
We have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-five, grant money from Civic League of Bay County Advisory Endowment Fund of the Bay Area Community Foundation. I move this resolution.
We have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-six, increased funding award from Region Seven Area Agency on Aging.
We have motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-seven, transfer reserve funds to Spanish planning project. I move this resolution.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-eight, pay close general and Center Ridge Arms. I move this resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one twenty-nine, budget adjustments for the Soldiers Relief Fund, the Department on Aging Fund, and Golf Course Fund. I move this resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash one thirty, agreement for use of Riverside Parking Lot for handicapped veterans that are handicapped. I move this resolution.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
That was all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Personnel and Human Services, Chairman Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-one, Michigan Centralization Birth Certificate System. I move that resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-two, monitors for freezer, refrigerator, walk-in coolers. I move that resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-three, popcorn fundraiser benefiting United Way. I move that resolution.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-four, amend independent contract agreement. I move that resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-five, SBSU subaward agreements, Bay County Community Health Clinic. I move that resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-six, agreement with Caravan Health. I move that resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-seven, MCE ITA and Altarium agreements. I move that resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-eight, overflow attorney contracts. I move that resolution.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes, I saw in the background information that there's no charge to the county for the education of the attorneys that sign up. I've got a question. That's for this year. What happens next year if other attorneys decide that they want to participate and they have to go to training? Who's responsible for those?
It's still under the MIDC. When I requested grant money, I wasn't entirely sure how many people were going to get on our overflow list. So I estimated kind of a higher number, just in case, and we still haven't utilized the funds that we have set for this year. But every year, they have to get additional training. So when we put in the information for next year's grant, that was taken into consideration as well.
Okay, so annually, you will budget for training and education?
Yes, we did, the Office of Public Defender and Criminal Defense always went to training prior to this. But now any overflow attorneys that require training, that is all covered by the MIDC.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty-nine, vacancies at prosecutor, juvenile home, health department. I move that resolution.
Motion to support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
That's all we have before the day, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. For the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a resolution accepting the report to the county executive, Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash one forty. I move that resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, there was three additional resolutions that were passed out. Two with behavior of health. First being Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash one forty-two. It's the multi-county agreement. I move that resolution. Has to do with the two ninety-eight pilot program.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.
Next is the Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash one forty-three. This has to do with the behavior of health and Medicaid caption rates for PIFPA. I move that resolution.
Any questions or comments? All those in, Commissioner Coonan.
Being that we just got it, I didn't get a chance to read it. Can anybody kind of give us a synopsis of this?
This is, has to do with what Chris Pinter talked to us at the last meeting? Correct?
I remember, Chris, what, 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 what was it talking about? We're trying to claim, instead of us sending money to Lansing, we'd be able to keep the money here and use it within Bay County. Capturing the funds.
And that's a MAC-supported? Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried.
And the next is Resolution two thousand and nineteen dash one forty-four. This is a request by the Honorable Jan Minor to enter into a MOU with the Eastern High School, Bay City Eastern High School, and move all the court-appointed jurisdiction with the mental health and drug abuse in there from there, and move that from the previous one with this with Bay Aaron Act school system. So remove from Bay and Aaron Act to Eastern Bay City.
And there's no cost to the county?
No cost to the county.
Commissioner Coonan.
Neither.
There's another one I really had opportunity to review. You'd think that if there's going to be a foot on our desk and we're going to approve it on the same day, that somebody would be here and give us a little explanation of this.
I agree. Yes. Kim, can you enlighten us a little bit on the resolution that you needed passed today?
I learned about this late, Amber. I think you were, did you work with them on, this is something the project Judge Minor's been working on with Brittany, and I got a call yesterday saying it possibly would be on the agenda today, so that's why I'm here. It's part of the plan, the school is a better fit. They've been having some issues with the other one, and since there's no cost and long-term it'd be a better fit with the Eastern High School, this is for the day treatment program, that was why the request was here. And I think it's mainly driven by the fact that even though it's only June, the fact is the school started... the fact is the school starts in, you know, like Labor Day time, and so they wanted to get rolling, get everything moved over, and signed, and approved, and geared up to start the school year. So, Amber, and again, I know Amber has been involved with, with the judge and with Brittany on creating this MOU.
Yes, it's an MOU for a day treatment program. What this basically does is it takes students under the jurisdiction of the probate court that are basically required to go to alternative education courses, and they also have workers that are provided by the court system that actually accompany them there. So, there are workers that are accompanying there. They pick them up, they take them to the school, they take them back. Just because of logistics and communication issues, it was determined that this new high school was a better fit for the program. They have the facilities that were available for the program, and we really hadn't undergone a new MOU in a number of years, so the old one was outdated and didn't really cover a lot of the aspects of the program. So, we worked on recreating that document, so everybody understood their responsibilities a little bit more clearly. The reason that they're looking to push it through faster at this point in time is in addition to schools starting around Labor Day, they actually run a summer program as well. So, some of these students can be involved in summer school if the system gets put together and moved over quickly enough, and that's why they needed the immediate approval by the board.
I just have a question, Kim. Was there a reason why this couldn't go through the normal channel? Was it that much of a, that it had to be taken care of today and not go to Ways and Means like normal channel?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that. I have not, I've not been involved in...
Amber.
It wasn't clear, they had not worked out all of the logistics yet, but with the start date of the summer program, the reason that they asked for it to get moved through in a faster process is because they could actually institute the summer program immediately if they could get the program moved over to a new location.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Kim.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, we get a second on that? We have a motion as our support. Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion carried.
That's all I have from the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. We have one from Commissioner Tom Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have Resolution 2019-141, commemoration of 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, Women's Right to Vote. Can I speak on that?
Yes, sir, you should.
You know, if you do the math, there was 143 years before the 19th Amendment passed. 143 years of women not having the right to vote. So, if you put it in perspective, you know, it's only been 100 years since women had that right to vote, and I think, you know, it's a travesty that we went as long as we went with women not having that vote. I celebrate that 100, and actually, most of that, 130, for 133 years, we didn't have an organized movement. It wasn't like they weren't pushing, women weren't pushing for the right to vote. But for about 19 years, that's when they organized, which is important, and really pushed that 19th Amendment, have that right to vote. So, I would ask that we adopt this resolution.
Support. Another comment, I think one of my wife's T-shirts says it best, "We've come a long way, baby." So, yep, congratulations, and thank you for doing that, Commissioner Ryder. Commissioner Coonan.
Along with women's suffrage, minority voting too, and today, in today's environment, they're still trying to suppress people voting rights, and that should be acknowledged as well and debated wherever we are at, because, you know, the, some folks think that the few numbers of people that hope it's easier to control the agenda, and it really is. People should be allowed to vote and not oppressed, and not intimidated or threatened at all. So, Tom, I like that, the 19th Amendment, and then also the minorities who probably gave a clue to that, right, huh?
No, they didn't.
And I think that came afterwards, too.
It did.
So, I guess it was the last thing, in 1968, I think.
Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Reports of county officials. Mr. Barsha.
Just, just a little bit, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to commend Commissioner Ryder, as Commissioner Coonan, the other Commissioners did, for his introduction, the resolution you just passed. It is unfathomable that, you know, for 133 years, women would go in this country without the right to vote. Hard to believe, but, yeah, as the Chairman said, things have evolved and changed rapidly, and fortunately, we don't have to confront situations like that. The Commissioners Coonan's observation that some still are the object of suppression of votes, and appreciate your concern on that. I just want to mention to the Board that Monday, yesterday, I did attend the meeting at the Carroll Center, and Commissioner Bick talked about your resolution that the Board adopted in support of the administration keeping the Carroll Center in Tuscula County. Based on Chris Pinter's comments in Bay Air Act and Mental Health, I expressed those sentiments, and the good working relationship we had in Carroll and the geographical location, it's been very convenient to Bay County. Department of Health and Human Services had four individuals and a deputy director there, and a number of community leaders. And Bay County was the only county to represent other than Tuscula County local officials. So, just thought I'd report that. And also the Pause in the Park event Saturday went very well. Great turnout, great weather, and the public had a chance to see a lot of dogs perform tricks, and some of the vendors there were very interesting in terms of how they can train dogs and address certain behaviors of pets. So, it was a great day and a big turnout. So, that's my report.
All right, thank you. Unfinished business. New business. Miscellaneous. I just have one thing under miscellaneous. Commissioner Coonan, myself, and Jim, Executive Barsha attended the Tennis Court on Park, First Serv Grand Opening. What a beautiful facility over there, and it was, I mean, it's a first-class, I'm glad that we in the county invested some money into the thing. Eight courts, very well, you know, put together and done, and I made my comment, whether it was well taken, I think it was, that they actually have a, they just don't build it, and how are we going to take care of it? They've got an endowment fund all set up to take care of what, you know, for years and years and years to come. So, it was good to see, good to see. It was a great, a great day. Announcements. Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, sir. June 29th is coming up on us. There's plenty of time to sign up for our Beach Wellness Run out of the State Heart. The race starts at 9:00, and hopefully Mother Nature will be kind to us again this year. Thank you.
Commissioner Herrick.
Well, down in Miami, because it was down in the beautiful south end of Bay City, they have the Polish Festival coming up, the annual event that takes place under the water tower at St. Stan's Field, and that's on the, from the 27th to the 30th, and on the 27th, they kick off with their, with their annual run through the south end, and obviously, you know, it's always, it's been wet, it's been hot, it's been cold, it's been everything, but, you know, it's a lot of years of doing it. And after the race, all the people who run seem to get together in the, in the beverage tent and accept awards and whatever else they have in there. And so, they have that run on the 27th, they have Kids' Day on Saturday the 29th, and they have a chicken barbecue on Sunday, the last day, but they have Polish music every night, the Four Solid Nights, and I can hear it from my house, and it's okay.
That's great. This weekend, of course, is the Pinconning Cheese Festival, hoping for good weather, couple of races going on. Fireworks Saturday night should be pretty nice. Parade Saturday at 11:00. Rumor has it that Executive Barsha's going to be there walking the streets, so that should be a treat for all the kids. You've got to make sure you bring your candy. Commissioner.
I just got a call from Michigan Associated Counties today, and they're looking for support of MAC PAC, the Political Action Committee for MAC, so he may be getting a call. So, if you have a few, few dollars to help support MAC PAC, that's a lobbying organization for MAC, and there's a lot of new legislators down there now, so they need to be educated. I think it's...
Anyone else? Next announcements were good. Appointments, 2019, October, Land Bank Authority, one three-year term. Department of Health and Human Services, one three-year term. Board of Canvassers, two four-year terms, expiring. Appointers are made from lists submitted by the major political parties. In November, Building Authority, two six-year terms. December, Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms, expiring Districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. Is there a need for a closed session?
There is, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.